Before everyone says. Oh, before I listen. Given the date, uh, September eleventh. Year twenty twenty-three, it's been twenty-two years. Uh, since we've lost a lot of good people. Um, in New York City. In Virginia, the Pentagon and in the fields, uh, a very nice shape as well, under there. And, um, I think it's important that we just take a moment of silence to remember. Um, twenty-two years later, those that we lost. Um, all those precious bombers released in fire that. Risked their lives to save others and some lost their lives saving others. And then, um, those that have kept us safe since then. Um, so if we could just take. Five seconds count, um, to remember them and commemorate their day here, it's important to do that. Thank you, everyone, for participating in that. First of all, you're ready for the ball of all.
Alda, here, Griffin, here, Huber, here, Michelle's.
President.
Slap.
Here.
Sunny Fair.
Yes, here.
Kyo.
Here.
Ritter thinking.
Here.
Eden, here, now.
Right, item C this evening is approval of immediate minutes from our August twenty-eighth council meeting.
We can prove the minute.
Thank you, Jamie, motion by Griffin.
Okay, second.
Thanks for the hand also said by Alda. But I heard this, obviously, Jamie, you just say. Well, it comes about five.
I can just, let me add my helpful comment, just so I feel like this will be the point of my comment. That Steve radar sign I saw the last, it had smiley face and frowny face.
Yes, we can add that.
Thank you.
Uh, please call the vote to approve the meeting minutes with that motion.
And Dallas.
Yes.
Griffin? Yeah. Slap?
Yeah.
Huber?
Yeah.
Alda?
Yeah.
Sunny Fair?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you. Uh, I am D this evening, it's our pre-arranged participation. Now I have a constitutional proclamation. And I'd like to invite Sheriff Darko. Uh, would you like to say a few words or would you like me to read the proclamation first?
Um, I don't think it would be great if you would.
You have to do that. So I read this proclamation on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-sixth anniversary of the draft Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas it is fitting and proper to encourage, support, and recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principle of limited government, the republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees an issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I shall be, Mayor of Exeter Michigan, with our plans to come to seventy through twenty-third as Constitution Week entered. I'll say, you know, to take notice of this. Darren, thank you for reminding us, you're coming here here. You're gonna give this to you and I should say every word. Yeah, that works. I apologize. Don't ever.
Thank you, Mayor Kyo. Um, it's really a privilege to be here, so far along in to, uh, soothing our democracy and dimension. Um, the Constitution, of course, is along with the Declaration of Independence. It's one of the foundational documents for our nation. And for many years, um, the Declaration of Independence was celebrated, beginning during the Revolutionary War years. But the Constitution did not have its own special commemorative event. Until nineteen fifty-five, when the Daughters of the American Revolution, the chief center of Congress, to set aside the week of the seventeen through twenty-third as Constitution Day. Um, the Congress approved it and President Eisenhower signed it into law in nineteen fifty-six. So we are, uh, as a group, very happy to have enabled that occurrence to, to come down to this. Um, there are many reasons why the Constitution, um, is very respectful and a wonderful document. Um, just a couple of those reasons, um, it's been an enduring document and has, uh, kept our country basically on its foot. For two-hundred-and-thirty-six years. Through, uh, civil wars, through world wars, um, through nine eleven, the terror attacks on nine eleven, um, and pandemics. Um, so it has endured and, uh, this is a very special document. Um, historians say that across the world, written constitutions of nations lasted an average of nineteen years. So ours having lasted for two-hundred-and-thirty-six years is even being very respectful. Another reason, um, is because the brainers had the foresight to think, well, you know, they're, this document may have to be amended initially. Um, so they provided for the amendments, but made it really quite difficult to get an amendment without. Um, there have been many, many, uh, amendments proposed over the course of the years, but only twenty-seven have been adopted. Uh, the first ten, of course, are the Bill of Rights. Um, other significant ones are, um, the thirteenth amendment, which abolished slavery, and the nineteenth amendment, which extended the vote to women. Um, I, I brought along tonight, um, some, uh, uh, copies of the Constitution and Declaration and some bookmarks off. I can't, I'll leave them on the table back here, is that, would that be okay?
That'd be great, thank you.
And, uh, uh, so maybe they will invite you to, um, to celebrate the Constitution and to, uh, with our duties and rights under that, and we've been very serious. Um, so, and in stopping, I'd just like to, um, read the preamble to the Constitution and then to you. Uh, we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense. Promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, for coming and for, if you mind, to hear about that, thanks a lot.
Yeah, um, did this give you time for a photo op?
Sure, it's always a good time to photo. Who do you want the photo? All of us?
Sure, that would be great.
I'm just letting you have to be, why don't, why don't we try to crowd the middle, Sharon, why don't you go right up front?
Okay.
Would you come up first? Something I was stupid, no, I'm not. Do you think so? Uh, I'm sure everybody wants to.
Five, huh?
That's.
Why I treat that short?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
Are we too loud or are you guys off?
No, I've got you off.
Okay.
You went over to.
Because, yeah, absolutely, that's good. Yeah.
Let's have big smiles. Constitution. Let's try it again, Constitution. There we go.
You know what?
It's right. It's what?
It's like, it's like excited, Constitution, but it was.
This will come on down there. Is that what you were getting?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, which I like, when they just already.
Yeah.
Very.
Thanks again, Sharon.
Sure.
Okay, we are down to non-arranged participation, but it was very small. The first of two opportunities on the agenda is going to have any topic. Uh, when we start, is there anyone in the audience here physically that would like to speak today? Okay, there are a number of people online, so that I do see one hand, that is Brian, that is hand raised, okay? Great, why don't we let Ryan speak, under non-arranged.
Uh, good evening, everyone, can you hear me all right?
Hey, Ryan, yes, thank you.
Yes. Hi, um, good evening, um, I'll make sure I go through the, the details, uh, Ryan Hinier, three, five, seven, seven Shaw Court. Um, here in good old Dexter, um. Stephanie and I actually just celebrated ten years in Dexter earlier this summer, so that's been exciting.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been a good ten years. Um, uh, I'm calling it today in my capacity as a member of Avalon Housing's Board of Trustees. Um, and I have a statement that I'd like to share with you all on behalf of Avalon in regards to the, um, the proposed nuisance, uh, chronic nuisance ordinance. Um, and just wanted to bring this to everyone in the community. Um, Avalon is really committed to the well-being of Hilltop residents. Um, that includes providing adequate care and support to residents and in turn reducing the use of emergency services. Um, this last week, for example, there were no, uh, Washington County Sheriff's Office service calls to Hilltop View. And Avalon is also committed to being a trauma-informed, um, a trauma-informed, uh, place of service. Um, Avalon wants to ensure that the city of Dexter remains committed to treating our neighbors at Hilltop View the same way that we treat other neighbors in the city of Dexter. Increasing the chances of criminalizing this property, um, uh, via an ordinance like this is not a trauma-informed response. Um, and it does not support the members of the, these members of our community. A resident of Hilltop View, a resident of Dexter, um, just like me, um, I've been here ten years, but, um, they are also, uh, residents of Dexter who deserve the same kind of equanimity and privacy as other citizens. Many of them have a lot of legitimate concerns for their own safety and that of their children, given their interactions with law enforcement since moving to Dexter. Um, we've heard directly from residents that the stigma and pre-existing perceptions about Hilltop View, uh, residents reached them before the property even opened. Um, many of you were with me at the open house when we, you know, did the opening ceremony and heard one of the residents talk about how, you know, she had read that people weren't, you know, weren't welcoming them here. And how much that hurt to hear as someone who's built a life and home here. Um, finally, we have a lot of concerns about an ordinance like this violating the right of every person to have a home regardless of their race or economic status. Um, you know, I urge you to, uh, as a council to vote against this chronic ordinance proposal. Um, and thank you for listening to, um, community voices and understanding, um, Avalon's position. Um, I'll have additional comments that I'll probably send via email, uh, when I have some more time to, uh, to process and consider. Um, but I would just like to, you know, at the end, express my personal disappointment at the proposal of this ordinance. Um, I want to encourage council and all council members and everyone in the, uh, within the sound of my voice to understand that the impact of your legislative actions on how we are viewed as a community. Um, from those from marginalized backgrounds, um, you know, that it is something that can't be taken back, that these things are, go in the public record. And it really, I really just want to remind you all that these residents are my neighbors too, I live down the street. Um, like, I'm in here on farms, I pass by that property every day. Um, they deserve the same kind of dignity and respect and privacy that you all give me when I live here in this town. Um, thank you for your time, I wish that you all have a pleasant remainder of your evening, um, and thank you again for your consideration of, um, of voting down this proposed ordinance, thank you.
Thank you for your time, Ryan. Gosh, anybody else? Anybody else have their hand up? I don't see any hands raised. Uh, no other hand raised online. Okay. All right, that will conclude our non-arranged participation, cause we're down to item F, which is the Declaration of Customs and Interests. Anyone have anything to declare? Same none, we'll go on to approval of the agenda. Joe?
Uh, we approve the agenda with the addition of the, um, item for the purchase of the home in the supplement. Under consent agenda number three. Um, changing seven A, which is my email to I two communications. And, uh, changing item M three from discussion to consideration item.
One second.
All right, I'm going to do the motion by Joe. And so, by, by, what was your second, Joe?
Uh, moving item seven A to I two communications. That, that's not going to be.
Yeah, okay. All right, and then M three to, from the special consideration. Okay. Okay, another danger is, why are you started it, so we have motion in the second, eight is touching on the agenda. Sergeant, please call the vote to approve the agenda as proposed.
Sunny Fair?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Alda?
Yes.
Huber?
Yes.
Slap?
Yeah.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries. We have no public carries this evening, so we're down to communications, section I, the upcoming meeting list. And, um, but we've moved from seven A. Right down to either of those. Okay, seeing no hands, I'll keep going, um, J one, we're down to reports, our first report tonight is from our public services superintendent. Welcome, Jim.
How's everybody doing?
Very good, you?
Good, good, actually, so, that's what your reports are bringing, guys, I can feel any questions coming when you use it.
Yes. Just want to comment that I see this speech on, on, uh, anniversary thing up for Netflix, so thanks for that, I'm, I think right now it's off.
Yes, it's off, that's what you were asking.
Yeah.
Josh, what's up? So we did that, so we figure we give another one yourself.
And that's true. Wow. Um, I just want to speak to the very first point on your own board, I feel like a lot of times people don't realize how much you guys contribute to the Paint Dexter Festival. And I just want to thank you, um, I got a lot of great feedback this year, and it's the festival that I used to co-chair. Um, I know how you guys help us, and I know how, uh, strength you are for manpower, and so thank you so much for helping us with that, because I think it really adds.
Other questions for Tim? There's a couple, didn't you, sorry?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on what was in the supplement about community park, and I happened to touch out that there the other day, I wanted to check out the expression swing, and. Uh, I appreciate that there is going to be some effort put in to the existing mall theory, because definitely it works for the winner. Uh, so I guess just, we talked about the resources you have available, again, at any time, if you don't feel like a resource, that's not because I do, I would like to do that, play down with that.
We talked about that, perfect. Um. So we, we're, we're going back to the bottom, when we started, uh, last week, we're going to keep going, ran a little snag, uh, today and tomorrow, for the company itself, so it's not a huge deal, but we'll go back to that. Uh, I've seen Trish Ray pump, we had some problems going with that, and hopefully this will be resolved, because we have the other one up the running, um, we're trying to. Let it through the year, but we can't, it's, after talking to some of the engineers, they feel that, uh, it's meant to pumps for a reason, so we gotta move forward with that, that's why, um, uh, gentleman. Um, I think possible start at the end of September. And the Danboy lunch list has been given to the, um, contractor themselves, and so we'll go on to that. They tried to fix it a little bit on Friday, but, uh, they didn't fix what we needed.
Then who's, who's best to talk about the tree meeting, that you and Michelle have a deep, deep, seven shot?
Yeah.
Um, can you talk about, uh, ways from K and B?
So, we've used K and B, press, and probably was as long as I've been here, about ten years now, and on Monday, we did over today, uh, they were down by the Adrian area where they were at, and they were driving to another drop site. Um, and they ended up, somebody blew a stop sign and hit their truck, T-boned them and killed four of their employees.
Oh, yeah.
So. So they said that, I talked to the owner, Rocky, gave my condolences, um, you know, explaining to him, you know, just, they're gonna, I mean, I don't know, we can do, but there's, can do. And, uh, he said, thank you, and that, uh, they're gonna try to, hopefully get everything done, and wrap it up, so we're. Within the next week, they'll be starting, they're not with us right away, but, um, yeah, it's, it's a tragedy.
Thank you, I have heard of that.
Yeah, good, good, good. So, I've been around there over the last couple of years, and since when we first, when I first started with them ten years ago, and, uh, so sad to see that happen. So, thanks, Justin.
Thank you, thank you, good work, then, Jay, you and Steph, thank you. Next up is our community development manager, Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, I was counsel this evening.
Good.
Good, great, excellent, excellent. Okay, before I go into updates, does anybody have any questions for me on my report?
Amy?
Well, I do a couple of things, so, yes, so, we, um. If the first one is related to your first general update about superior story, the multi-dependent buildings, the head office building, what is the multi-dependent building?
So, it's basically a business condo, um, if you, uh, are familiar with the, um, back of the park, across the street from where Dex Tech, Dex Tech is, is a, um. A long perpendicular building, has about eighty different units in it, that's the Dexter Business Center, they are individual units, they're smaller for smaller businesses.
Right, got it. Uh, I was, I was like, I mean, it's related to self-storage, but it's separate.
It, these would be separate businesses.
Separate. And then, thank you, the other question I have pertains to K two on the consent agenda about the updating death and all that authority development tactics, by this new plan. Yeah. One is, uh, a question where it talks about, um, you need to be posting notice of this in twenty places in the DDA, it seemed like a large number, and I was just curious. Do you have twenty places anyway?
Yes, so, all of the kiosks will get them, um, excuse me, and then a variety of different places, a key in businesses, um, um, that's most likely where we will do combination in the downtown. Um, um, it could be in businesses or residence that are, you know, have people that come and go, all the way down to, you know, the Dexter.
Uh, and then I, I just went back and looked at the DDA, uh, and. Talking about the Area Citizens Council, and I know that's something I've seen, we're trying to create one, have we ever had one?
We kind of had, you do, you have to have at least a hundred residents, and up until the twenty-ten census, um, we didn't have a hundred residents. Um, excuse me, uh, once, uh, the different subdivisions, Eden Court, here on the, Orchard River, Bill, uh. Here on farms, once most all started getting theirs out, post-two-ten.
Mm-hmm.
Then we had a hundred residents, and that, then.
Okay. So, per the MCL, it says. The Development Area Citizens Council shall be established at least ninety days before the public hearing on the development and tax and financing plan.
Mm-hmm. We've been trying since March, I think it was, we sent out, um, letters to every resident in the Dexter district. Um, inviting them to, 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 uh, to participate, I received eight emails, I immediately, uh, sent it back to people, the applications, and any answered any questions they, excuse me, to have. Um, I received one application in the first go-around, but that person has since, um, rescinded. Um, none of the remaining eight, um, excuse me, have responded. Um, I reached out to the two gentlemen in one-fifty deference that have been coming to the various meetings, and they respectfully declined us.
I have two, so sorry.
So it says, I mean, it says here, the Development Area Citizens Council shall be established by the governing body, I think that means there's some formal action that.
It, it, it's the traditional, may I appoint council approves, but there's also a section in there that states that, um, uh, if one is not established, and there's a number of reasons that it gives. Um, that does not prevent a, a community from adopting a plan or going ahead with their vote.
You could point to that, like, because it's not in this immediate one-twenty-five, that one-six-seven one.
So, do you have the entire act up? I can send it to you, to everyone, unless you want me to call them.
I just don't want to do something, uh, by the.
I have two people that have. Probably going to do about that, I think I hope it's to bring back more than that up in the, in, for, for the words. We do, or some.
Good, five.
Yeah.
One other question about that, can we get a, uh, so is it the thing, like, it existed and we added it, or this is all brand new?
So, the two-thousand-six strategic plan. Had the strategic plan portion, and then it had the development line and the tax increment financing plan. For this strategic plan update, we are separating them, because that development and TIF plan is, uh, that's a long look out at finances. It's, it'll extend this particular DDA to, I think it was twenty-fifty-three, if I'm not mistaken, um, you don't want to have to go through and amend that all the time, because it's only, if they, if the process. You create a strategic plan, which, as things change in your district, um, you have the ability to update that one, it doesn't have the same, um, uh, requirements. That the development is given for them, um, you'll notice that in the, both the development and the TIF plan, there are specific items in each one that have to be addressed. Um, so this is, this is. This is the first part, the part where you're really engaging the public and the, the board, and figuring out what your exact projects will be, that's the strategic plan part, that's the one that. You want to keep it separate, and that would be able to update it as the DDA may need to update it, without going through a long, long process.
So, why is this tech, did it exist somewhere in substantially the same format somewhere else, and we're just reorganizing it, or is most of this new? I'm just asking, because if there is the opportunity to see like a redline version of something, like, I don't know, so if this is all just new, then that would exist.
The bold. Portions, creation of the development, future vision, um, um. The, the actual questions that have to be addressed, those are the same, the answers, uh, may be slightly tweaked from what we had before, but they're basically the same. It's the proposed improvements and the costs that we are estimating at this particular point, based on the total amount of tax increment that will be generated over the life of the plan, that's all new. The tables with the TIF numbers, um, pages sixty-eight, sixty-nine, that's all new. The, um, uh, mileage, that's updated, because obviously from two-thousand-six, it would be different.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the projected revenue tables are new and updated. But the questions from the state, those are the same questions that are in. But the questions from the state, those are the same questions that are in every single DDA.
Okay, thanks, yep, I can follow up with other questions.
Uh, nineteen. Those are, okay, and if we have any technical questions that you want specific answers to that I can't provide, Mr. Abatini from CIB Planning is, uh, attending virtually, and would you have the answer to those questions?
Do you have anything?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, all good questions, other questions, Michelle?
I think you wanted to know about the DTE thing.
Okay, so the DTE, yes, DTE meeting went really long.
Thirty, there's gonna be at least thirty, we don't think there'll be much more than that, but thirty is what we're planning on.
You've got all the options figured out?
Yep, the, Brice created the map along with, um, Kurt and, and Courtney from BPW, um, that's been given to DTE relief, uh, DT and relief. Um, normally only twenty trees are given, Karen River Watership Council gave a donation, so that's what gives us an additional ten trees. The date is October fourteenth, the time is, starts at eight-thirty, on Ridgeway Court, we will blanket the information out there. Um, you are encouraged to participate. You are encouraged to participate, um, uh, is part of this, so, um, uh, actually Ryan Ellis, who, uh, many of you know, is our intern and actually lives in West Ridge, will be, um, zoning out and helping to spread the information.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, are there any more commissioners or what? On the bottom of page two, they don't have it, they're having a bold one, and then whatever's in their report. Wow.
It's the, I mean, you can say you don't report too, but the Karen River Watership Council had this on the river last week, and, um, well, with that. But well, though, um, you can say what you want to say about it, because your report comes up.
Twenty-six. Okay, thank you for that. Joe?
Um, just briefly on the public safety facility, uh, I had last Tuesday, there was some significant suggestions and discussions. And, uh, so we're, I think it's in, I do remember it's in the back, so we, we are meeting again tomorrow, it's unscheduled, but picked up another meeting, um, in an effort to keep things, uh, moving on, and so this will be, tomorrow will be another meeting, and the following Tuesday will be another meeting. And hopefully, the next council meeting will have better feedback for, about the progress that.
Hey, thank you, I'm down with city manager, work on your head of J five.
So, uh, the only real update that I have for you is, um, Jack provided a, uh, uh, word and updated, um, activity tracker for the Vicentennial in the supplement. Um, so if you have a chance to take a look at that, um, give me, uh, questions off, um, plug now. Um. We have some significant RFPs, uh, coming up, um, we'll transit into, into black or, that kind of items, um, at an upcoming meeting. But, um, if there are any questions for me, you have the same one.
I just have one, what was the kind of transition base of the connection?
So, uh, it's, it's coming up here pretty quick, um, I, I'm gonna guess a month, month and a half. Uh, they're, they're making progress, um, but, uh, I did get an email from Marcus today that, um, there are some questions about, uh, the easement, uh, through progress property, and when, when we're going to be able to, to get that, if we're originally do, when we plan on leaving the buildings immediately adjacent to the, the map.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Jack? Okay, I, um, I've been reaching out to several residents that I know, this isn't DDA district, trying to work. Build the citizen advisory board, uh, that, um, heard back from David Warner. And, uh, Seth Hill has applied as well, so one of the two names that it is being, um, at least those two, the next meeting. I hope to have, have more, but, uh, encourage anybody that lives within the district, if you don't help, you live in the district or not, um, feel the calls, send you a map, we'll just find you. On the map, um, the boundary is not as obvious, um, there are residents on York Street, for example, in here in Barnes, which are in the bills that are within the district, and they may not even know they're in the DDA, so, um, anyway, I've started that process, and, uh, hope to have a recommendation on that, please. Does anybody have any questions for me on anything? I did put it at the top of my report to try and recover to, uh, uh, the M third office as you're driving around town, it's very, this world's even, we have a lot of people walking, a lot of people biking, a lot of cross-country runners running. Um, more vehicles in the queue, if you will, more vehicles waiting, more vehicles stopping, blurring. And, uh, mostly done, I just, they're having coffee in the morning when we're driving off their kids, so, extra time, I can get there on time, and be careful, especially with big boys walking around, so. All of that to everybody, hope everybody had a good day today. I will move down to the consent agenda, where there are three items, two that were on the posted agenda, and our item, um, that we added it for the agenda, so.
All right. I move, we have through the three items on the consent agenda, is the location of the payroll, and now six hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents. Consideration of setting a public hearing. To consider the upgraded downtown development authority, development and tax increment financing plan for October ninth, twenty-twenty-three, and uh, consideration of a purchase, of purchase of a tertiary fee, um, for an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay, motion by over, is there a second? All seven, second, last, thank you all. Okay, when you're ready, please call over to approve the three consent agenda, I have a one.
Hold up, yes, Griffin, yes, Sunny Fair?
Yes.
Black?
Yeah.
Hubbard, yes, Michelle?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, motion carries, we have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move to our new business section. Uh, M one is consideration of Mill Creek Flats Plan Unit Development Preliminary Site Plan.
So, uh, I'm making motion, uh, motion one, and I'm taking a page eighty-eight, based on recognition of the plan, which would follow the public hearing, submitted by the information on August. And along with the information provided by the applicant staff, Carl Wardman, H Chen, D A M D, and from soon to second, eight oh two, D one, and nineteen dot zero five F. The Dexter City Council approves P P S P twenty-three dash zero five, Mill Creek Flats Preliminary Site Plan, and special lands used, subject to the twenty-two conditions on page eighty-eight, eighty-nine in the back.
Okay, so motion number one, approved. My big idiot, they're not in the back. We've got a second.
Yeah, I'll second. So, uh, uh, I will ask you first, would you like me to go through this, or would you like your presentation from the applicant first, and then when I can wrap it up?
I'm more than happy to hear from the applicant, if she'd like to say a few words, I'd always hear.
Good, Amy, I guess that kind of makes my burden a little bit heavier, so I'm Mike Penn, uh, I like to start these off by saying that I'm Mike Penn, but also lives at three-three-eight-nine Broad Street. Uh, so, as you know, we, we're here to see, uh, kind of the approval from the planning commission, they made the recommendation that we move through preliminary site plan approval. Uh, we have, since that meeting, and obviously there's a long list of issues that are in that, uh, recommendations that we need to meet. I think the two most important ones that we'd like to call out tonight, and we're, we're open to, you know, answering questions as well, is first and foremost, the kind of the, the property boundary between us and the cemetery, so if you recall where this site is, we're between Grand New Commons, along Grand Street, on, between Grand New Commons and the Forest Lawn Cemetery, so it's a two-point-five-three acre parcel, kind of nondescript, it's very long and deep, uh, the way it's situated, but we know that boundary between us and the cemetery is really, really important, um, so, we have heard from planning commission, there's a lot of recommendations from planning commission on maybe how to treat that, between landscaping and walls and fencing and a lot of different things there. Um, our commitment to you, as well as planning commission and the community, is to figure out how to do that and do that well, uh, but because there's so many different, uh, varying opinions on how to do that, and, and the right way to accomplish that, I think we're, we're working through that with the cemetery, so since that meeting, planning commission, we met with staff, we also met with, uh, Carly Wardman, uh, and Megan, and then we also met with the cemetery, and we're working through, um, collectively to try to figure out how to make that, treat that boundary well. Uh, with that also being said, and I'll, I'll leave you to questions after this, and if you'd like to talk to our team as well, you're welcome to. Um, there is also an easement that's come to light, uh, that is a part of, of right of first refusal with the cemetery, so we have to extinguish that. Again, we're working with them, trying to how to, how to navigate that, and get, you know, giving a, probably some sort of like maintenance agreement to be able to kind of maintain the, the cemetery line there between our property and their property, so, we're working through those, um, we're open to questions, and appreciate your time.
Thanks for the summary, thanks for coming. Let me ask, I have any questions for Michelle, or for the applicant, yeah, I'm done. Dave?
Yeah.
You have a question, do you like that?
I do.
Okay.
I'll let you spell it out.
Anywhere's the thought?
Uh, when you came and, uh, addressed the planning commission, you started your statement by saying, uh, you know, we, part of the goal of this project is we wanted somebody who's intimately involved in the community from a number of different levels, wearing a number of different hats, we wanted to make sure, I'm just curious, we can elaborate on who we is.
That's me. So, I, you know, like I said, I live on Broad Street, I served on the DDA, I was baseball coach for thirteen years, I'm a local business owner, a realtor. I see every day kind of like the conditions of what, you know, supply and demand have done to housing prices, both good and bad, prices out certain people. Uh, I think we have a lack of supply of rentals in our, in our community, Walkout Creek is namely our biggest, is our biggest supplier of, of rentals, we have a lot of, as we all know, there's a lot of fourplexes, sixplexes, a few different, different types, if you will, but I think the, the purpose of that statement was really to, to highlight that. From my perspective, is, this is something that I think that we need, it's something that I believe in, and something that, like, I'm local, it's me, so that's, that's.
When you said, we wanted somebody, like, we.
Yeah, it's our, it's our, it's LLC in general, like, so, the, so Grand Development Group is a, is a partnership of three different people, I speak for the Grand Development Group in general.
Are you able to elaborate on who those people are?
Sure, Dick Bailey is another member of, of the group, Dick Bailey owns a parking complex on Grand Street as well, um, he's also a local, he's a local Dexter resident, in terms of, like, lives in the, uh, sort of in the city, but in the Dexter School District down on Fleming Road, and there's another, there's another, um, individual in tourist shank, who does not live in Dexter, but she has worked on a couple of product projects in the city back. I'll take it close.
Okay, does, does anybody have any questions on the conditions that are listed, didn't remember. Michelle, I could ask.
While you're thinking about that, I do have one correction that I need to make for you, it's not on the commission good approval, but it is under the deed restriction. Um, uh, Jim Smith, who's the president of the Forest Lawn Cemetery, called me today to let me know that, um, uh, the parcel that is addressed is seven-nine-nine-seven, he has that long, um, sort of, uh, it's a duplex now, but it used to be some sort of warehousey kind of building, actually, this is another part of the cemetery. So, the first two sentences under staff comments, under deed restriction on page eighty-four, just disregard that, um, excuse me. The back of that parcel was sold by that property owner years ago to the cemetery, and the, um, this ingress, egress right of way that's, um, uh, that needs to be dealt with is on the left-hand side, that's why I got it inside, not because it was a neat, it's the cemetery.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm directly after. Um, you mentioned that since the planning commission, you've had some meetings about cemetery area, you had, this came up at planning commission, which is why I'm gonna ask if there's been any talk about it, or progress on it. About the fact that that cost may not lie completely within you as the developer, but may be some sort of split cost with the cemetery, does that anything was come up in what you've talked about?
Yeah, so we, we discussed that, I think that, and again, I don't want to speak in cemetery, that's, that's their place.
Yeah.
Uh, what my understanding is that they do have a plan to, that if you, if you were to lock that property, and you're welcome to, or be in cemetery and, and see that property line, that's a question. There is a chain link fence that, that runs kind of the per, the perimeter there, if you will, that's not obviously on the front-facing part of Grand Street. That chain link fence has multiple, you know, large trees and shrubs and things that are headed, I think it's kind of an eyesore, but kind of there worse, if you will, I think they have plans to address that long-term, um, and so we're, we're trying to figure out how to, again, be a good neighbor there, and try to figure out how to leverage what we're gonna already be doing, we're gonna be on-site moving earth and doing different things like that, can we help remove that, how will we help share some costs, maybe on how to treat that, so on, so forth. So I don't think we have that finalized, we obviously know that's a condition that we need to meet for final site plan approval, but it's not finalized.
I guess I only ask that because I know that that's sort of been a hot topic, for planning, and, um, you know, I, I mean, I know any development project has, I, I just want to make sure that that's balanced between the two property owners.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I think that, you know, Mr. Cardy at the time said that it was, if you waved at Matt and Juan, he would put a block wall all the way down, and kind of block it, which, which, you know, I think that maybe it's debatable on how you, how you treat that, right, in one sense, it helps private sacred cemetery, and the other stuff, like, does it create a differing effect on how the, the look and the feel of the property, and how the border's treated, right, so I think those are very complex issues to kind of like navigate, and I think that we'll try to do our best to figure out how to do that, and block the way.
Right, I just wanted to make sure, so I'm mixing, like, that sort of stuff.
Absolutely, that's, that is, I want to make loud and clear, we aim to get that right, um, you know, to the best rate of our ability.
And that's it, any questions on the conditions, so, Dave?
I have a question, Michelle, uh, prior to the meeting, for instance, the applicant shall demonstrate that the E D provides at least three of the following site design elements that could not be attained through a project design under conventional planning. What are the at least three site design elements that could not be attained through a project design under conventional planning?
So, the pedestrian transitory design of the building oriented closer to the sidewalk, and the parking to the side or the rear, if this was going straight to site plan, those buildings would have had to be set back twenty-five feet, if you would have looked on in relation to Grand New Commons and the cemetery. Um, so, we consider that a benefit, preservation enhancement, restoration, natural resources, um, et cetera, in accordance with sub, substantial. So, the attention to detail and the, um, the ultimate treatment that is going to be done along that's, that boundary line with the cemetery, excuse me, um, they're going to be going over and above, just providing landscaping. Um, um, the ordinance, if it was straight site plan, we would not have the same, um, ability to require that extra effort to not only screen, but be observant of the fact that you've got headstones and grave sites almost up to the boundary. Um, so, that's, that's the second one, um, the transition between higher and lower densities, uh, non-residential, residential. Um, it's the treatment of the, uh, entire development, how it's laying out in comparison with Grand New Commons, and how it. In comparison with Grandview Commons and how it addresses the frontage on the side to that pathway. Um, how it addresses the uh, uh, multiple family across the street, but then the warehousing that's next door. And um, the um. If it was con- conventional, it it, it just wouldn't have the same. We wouldn't have the same ability to um, um, push for the treatment and um. Um, quality of design that we've got. Those are the first three, uh, mitigation of off at off-site impacts on public facilities. Not only are they going to be pulling uh sewer and water across the front of their site. But they also will be connecting um to an existing. Water uh kitty corner. Um, and they'll be bringing a main into their site uh using a pump station uh for the sewer as well. Um, uh, and then the sustainable materials that they are providing um in this problem.
So could not E and D. Be needed to be achieved in conventional zoning, right? Like with the site plan? I mean, Alaska you mentioned, couldn't eventually down development do that?
Not to the extent that we're pushing them forward. So if it was a straight site plan. And I might be stepping out of bounds, if you don't want to do, um. Instead of requiring that easement for the main and that pump station to be private, um. Straight site plan may have, may have. Just allowed it to be in the right way. As opposed to the special easement. And the, the. Simulation, the depth, list station, the pump station, keep private.
As far as the pedestrian is realizing of the, as far as the pedestrian, when you design those frontages and how it looks, you know, the setbacks, for example. I mean, I would rather see that stuff written into the zoning ordinance as opposed to becoming an extension to the zoning ordinance. If what we're saying, you want in certain parcels is this other desirable setback situation, it's not clear to me why not just isn't written into the zoning.
So. If it was, um. I get what you're saying, um, it's not as easy as doing it. As a blanket kind of thing, um, i- in this case, it works. Because Grandview Commons, um, the, of what's already there on Grandview Commons. If Grandview Commons was set back twenty-five feet instead of being up closer to the front. There may not have been the same, you mean, you're right, it wouldn't be. An over and above kind of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you say that the list station is gonna be in public or private?
It's gonna be private. It's gonna be, and it'll be discussed and baked into the development. They'll have to maintain it, etc. They'll have to provide an easement to the.
It is, I thought there might be an opportunity, it wasn't, wasn't private, basically, the other two buildings that are on the station is connected. Oh, the northern, northern, and then the two buildings are on their own way station right now.
So that, yeah, those are, that's the one station that's high.
But I just wanted to try and follow.
That one is, well, it's private, right, right, and then it goes into ours, and that's basically the essential, this is gonna be. So it's gonna go a minute inside our site. We actually had to put an extra manual, so it's not all hidden. One manual that Grandview tapped into, and we'll hit another one directly to that, thank you.
That, so my, I'm already correct, I believe that only it was a perfect way for one planning development. And that's not because I don't like the project and don't want it to succeed, it's because. I do have a pretty high standard for planning developments that I need to clearly see the nexus between. Demonstrated recognizable material benefits and the modifications that are necessary to achieve that. In this case, I do like the project, I hope it succeeds, there are some tweaks with it, but I am having a problem finding recognizable. Benefits that it wouldn't be possible with conventional. You could have the buildings facing the fronts, it's gonna be a bit back farther, um. There are ways that the site plan could be changed to preserve more of the natural resources, it could have under parking. Um, stormwater instead of cutting down trees and having a traditional pond or rain garden. Um, you can do transitions without it, um, you can do the mitigation, you can use sustainable building materials, so. It's difficult for me to square those two because. So for example, they said we we need to get more units, or we need to get closer to the site because we can't develop over there. And it's the only way to buy affordable units is to do it, that's a very clear nexus, and that has been demonstrated for me by support project concept. But I can't support it because I I can't say that it boots all these to my test. What, did you put it all in there?
Now I'm in the elevator.
Okay, sorry, it's still the same right there.
Still sitting about that.
They don't have any questions on the conditions, if they also have questions on anything, they have to. Okay, we have motion number one. If we made eighty-eight, prepare, come over to eighty-nine, make that summer fair, second by hundred. Very clear call of vote to approve the uh planning and development, we're gonna take whatever we think is best.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Alda?
Yeah.
Michelle?
No.
Flack?
Yes.
Griffin? No. Sammy Farah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, good luck for your work environment.
Thank you.
Michelle, thank you for your work, I as well. Okay, uh, new business item M two, consideration of side object interaction committee goals and objectives. We had our look count from sixty-seven. And. And what I'm on the table, things that we were all sort of thinking about or asking questions about. And I think we. The fact that you were gonna summarize those minutes, right? I want, want to remind you of the date of the last year. You voted that. Or that's that's a week.
The committee means on the twenty-second.
Okay, that's what we have, the twenty-second.
Twenty-fifth is council.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
That's definitely. But I think we had some good comments, I went to two that were, we're gonna make a motion to have formal goals, I can see the minute, part of those goals. Um, yeah. Yeah, it's just out of the packet. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Lott interviewed the audience. Dave, you weren't able to to hear the workshop, you could hear on recorded. Then later, but we. We basically asked them, we requested additional information that we'd like to fill back to you as part of the goals, but I think they're gonna share it, need by order. Well, um, yeah, for, for example, um. How confident are you that we could find a, you know, a well on the site, for example? And have you done anything to to show? That the land would. They'll find such a well, if that would proceed to be a benefit, you know, to us, or to the President, or taking the decisions. And then I think related to that, you know, where would you allow a, where would you propose one go? With the kind of situation of your. Layout, that's, that's a question. So I think if we could get those comments. Down on paper, we bring them back to the next meeting, I also consider it a bonus. When Kathy and Jennifer basically, or Jessica, I heard right now, and so it's not like it's a secret, if everybody can listen to what we talked about. I thought they were good healthy comments, so it's in the whole plane. But it makes sense to those moments.
Yeah, I, I don't comment on these until we guys come to a meeting.
And then a hundred more phone have sent it down, so it makes sense. We're looking on a hover. Check it myself, Carol. There's nothing, it's about nature, there? It's difficult for me to see supporting of this. In its current point, um. The area, we can talk about wanting mixed housing and this type of thing. Forty acres is only gonna be single-family house. You're not gonna get a developer for financing, do multiple stuff back there. Forty acres is too small for. Old T to even wake up for it, and so it's gonna be just a typical. Small developer who can get. Financing to do it, and the financing is for single-family or apartments or some kind of this. Um, so I'm scheduled, it will provide additional housing options, it'll be market rates. And when you look at the availability of market rate housing for every. One hundred people at the. A hundred percent of G M I or above. There's a hundred and two housing options for there, so we're not really moving the needle on there. Um, I am concerned that as presented, even though I won't go into the details of the the plan we saw, because there's no way we can control that at this point. Um, that it's committing a lot of the sins of urban planning from the nineteen fifties to the nineteen eighties. Um. If there is uh an an access for construction, I guarantee you there'll be at least half a dozen trucks a day coming through. Uh, Dexter crossing, I guarantee it, it's gonna be the big trucks with the the bigger pipes on it. Um. The lack of access, which I don't believe South Township is gonna really. Of another access point means that there'll be. With eighty houses, eight hundred or two thousand additional trips per day through there, if it's just a single-family house. Uh, I don't like having residential that close to high-pressure gas lines, remember we had some, um. When the township had an explosion on the very gas line, and with the only two access points, one gets blown up, there's fire, it it becomes a trouble. Um. So. That's all I want to share. Thank you. Good luck.
I respectfully wish you had shared that during our work session, because that's all I ask.
Yeah, we have a motion by Hubbard, instructed by South Carol. To put forward an action to allow staff to. Type up the minutes of the, in the discussion, and get that organized in some way. Or through a goal, but it didn't go better than that. Where did you spell the vote?
Flack?
Yeah.
Sammy Farah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Alda?
Yeah.
Griffin? Yeah. Kiel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for the discussion during the work, I'm kind of here. Uh, new business item M three is a consideration, I don't think we change the agenda considerations, I'll. Providing for the public peace and health and the safety of persons and property. Yeah, I see that again.
Um, I make a motion that the Dexter City Council does not consider or discuss further. The nuisance ordinance and the council suspend further inquiry and investigation into this matter. Until such time as the issue is raised at a council meeting during proposed agenda items. And is approved at that time by a motion and majority vote of council in favor of considering the topic again.
Best option?
Let's read that again. I move that the Dexter City Council does not consider or discuss further. The nuisance ordinance and council suspend further inquiry and investigation into this matter. Until such time as issues raised at a council meeting during proposed agenda items. And is approved at that time by a motion and majority vote of council in favor of considering the topic again. I want to get her, for her, it's. So what was that, Carol? Alda? Second? Okay. Um. The session? And I'll go to what? Go ahead again.
Um, go ahead. A number of thoughts on this, um. I'm gonna read what I have, because I still put a lot of time into getting this, I want to make sure it's complete. How that's that, I mean, very conversational. So, um, on the issue, first in response to the comments of the packet regarding the request by Ms. Sugar and Ms. Patino. For, and lack of response. I believe that we on the council are elected representatives of the city, and we respond to our consistent constituents' requests. And they communicate with us at their discretion. I do not believe any resident or business owner is required to respond to a request from an individual council member if they prefer not to respond. No council member is empowered by charter or ordinance to mandate responses from any resident or business owner. And not responding to a request does not respect or reflect badly upon them. They have the right to speak to us and not at their discretion. The charter states council has the authority. To legislate for the city and individual council members have very limited authorities. I will say in previous conversations with Ms. Ms. Patino, I explicitly told her, in my opinion. That she had no obligation to respond to requests, she didn't feel comfortable answering. And that any official request from council should and could be made through the city manager. The statistics in the packet aren't telling us anything that we don't already know. Mark Twain's attributed with saying there are three kinds of lies, lies, damn lies, and statistics. Statistics in this case, without context and understanding the events, the people behind the statistics. Are being chosen to try and direct the desire and narrative. We all understand there are issues that, though, about it, Hilltop. However, in looking at the statistics, it should be noted. The person involved with the indecent exposure and attempted breaking and entering was a member of the Dexter community prior to Hilltop. Being constructed and lived in the community. Then, at this time, not allowed back to Hilltop. Per discussions with faith in action, there are three households that are medically or physically fragile. And they do have significant calls for service, especially those regarding the D A F E. And this is a quote, many of the calls related to several long-term time residents of the city of Dexter who currently live. At Hilltop. They should be here, Hilltop, and other residences within the city limits. I hope every one of us can understand and empathize that behind every single one of these statistics, there are one more people. People who are mad, scared, or hurting in some way at the time they made their calls for service. The quantities and the statistics are frightening and taken without context or knowledge as to whether or not the issues are being addressed. We also need to remember, this is the first time this situation has happened in Dexter. Walkabout Creek was originally subsidized housing. The village at the time received similar comments from residents. And there were similar issues when Walkabout Creek started, and Walkabout Creek also had more calls for service. Than other ar- areas over the years, the village and the residents at Walkabout Creek adjusted. Nobody been set up any longer. I was grateful to Mayor Kio for involving me in this discussion with Ms. Sugar. From a, from faith in action and Ms. Patino from Avalon. I know both of them from previous introductions through council member Hubbard. And phone calls and emails to discuss issues at Hilltop. Mayor Kio is aware of my experience in property management and real estate, and we have discussed many landlord tenant and residential real estate issues in the past. Especially as to how they exist in and pertain to Dexter and housing Dexter. I also chair the Dexter Housing Task Force. For these reasons, I believe Mayor Kio asked me to join him at the meeting. To be completely honest, my fear going into the meeting was that. Ms. Sugar and Ms. Patino were not going to. Indicate that they were doing what they needed to do to address the concern that Hilltop. After the meeting, based on our discussions of the steps being taken at Hilltop. Faith in Action Avalon are in fact doing everything they can to mitigate the issues. People often think of a lease in terms of being a contract, and it is. But as with any contract, there are not hard and fast rules about what is done. Regardless of what is allowed to be done by virtue of the lease. Most leases have a paragraph that says failure to enforce a provision on the lease doesn't invalidate that section. Of the lease o- or the lease overall explicitly allowing discretion. I would not give the city my lease or leasing requirements if I was Avalon or Faith in Action. Especially if I felt the only reason it was being requested so that it could be used against me. I would also respond to emails or requests for information or meetings based on past experiences and interactions. And I would avoid non-productive or harmful situations. In addition, I'd. In addition, I've spoken with residents of Hilltop that do not want to engage with some members of our community because they have seen and know what has been said about them prior to and after moving to Dexter. Ryan mentioned that tonight in the uh unarranged comments. That being said, the discussion with Faith in Action and Avalon indicate they are doing all the things they need to do with addressing individual residents with issues, including proceeding with evictions as need, if needed. And they hired two new counselors who are each on site forty hours per week and are trained experts. Mayor Kio mentioned this last week or the last council meeting after the meeting. That 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 is extremely significant. One of the biggest expenses of property management is your there are of real estate multifamily is your property management. It literally is one of the biggest expenses there are. Faith in Action.
I have a point of order here. We have a motion at the table about postponing or delaying this. And I appreciate your comments. This is why I have the I want the agenda. I just wanted to have a discussion about it. I just want to be sure that your comments, which are going in much greater detail than about why you want postponing or not to talk about this. Everybody at the table is wanting to have an opportunity to share that level of detail.
We've had many people make prepared statements before I hear you. So I'm going to let him finish this one and see what I'll call.
We don't want to cast there. We've had people call out when we're this is the motion about postponing. The discussion should be about postponing now the topic itself. So I just want to make sure that we're allowing comments from one member, these types of comments.
There's a motion to postpone. We're not considering it further. We're not considering this tonight and not considering it in the future unless it's
So are these comments not considered, considering?
No, these are the reasons why I believe we should not consider it further.
He made the motion when he gets the chance to leave it. Okay.
Uh, in the meeting with Faith in Action Avalon, we discussed and heard there is usually an adjustment period of time where residents that have come from places where they are dealing with trauma and issues surrounding their former homes have to adjust. They referenced uh the development that Avalon has in Chelsea and the issues when originally purchased by Avalon and the new residents and new residents were placed, but those issues were addressed. And now they have one social worker that goes there for four hours per week. Hilltop was different in that two dozen families were brought in at the same time, all in, all adjusted. Avalon's proceeding with an eviction now. But as noted in the article that was included in the packet from Madison, Wisconsin, where the housing provider asked residents to ask their city officials why the eviction process took so long. Washington County and State of Michigan have a process for evictions and it is not a short process. An eviction takes a minimum of two to four months to complete. Notice thirty day waiting period, filing and scheduling court dates, usually forty weeks out, forty days out, often a second hearing, one to two weeks later. And even once an eviction is issued, there's another ten day waiting period, followed by scheduling with the sheriff or deputies for the actual eviction. It's not a fast process. Also, eviction is not a step to be taken lightly. There are long term including making it extremely difficult for the person that's evicted to find future housing. Most landlords will not accept an application from a person that previously has gone through an eviction and often will not consider an application if a person has had an eviction filed against them. Is basically a lifetime sentence as evictions and court records do not go away. Losing housing assistance can be waiting, can be waiting years to get on a waiting list for assistance again, and then the wait lists are often by year. Screening of tenants is never, is never perfect. And it's impossible to avoid all issues. There are many articles and books written about how to screen applicants, but no one has come up with a foolproof method. And talking to our constituents at Hilltop, these are people that want to feel safe in their home to protect their children. Most of them believe they can find that here that many of us did with our families. However, recent feedback in Hilltop has indicated that there's a family that is looking for a home in another community because they don't feel welcome, accepted, or safe enough. Not as the issues at Hilltop. But because they feel uncomfortable and unwelcoming in the community. That is perhaps the most tragic indictment of our community I've heard. It makes me very sad. The proposal for this ordinance pushes us further down that path as an unwelcoming community. Perhaps we should ask why it is there isn't a statistically significant number of households of color that live or move here in state of Dexter. I know the sheriff has been working closely with Hilltop, gives them regular reports on issues. What on county care talks deputies are seen so Hilltop can address the concerns with residents directly. Per feedback and as Ryan mentioned, there were no calls for service to the Washington County Sheriff in the last week as of yesterday afternoon. It appears they are making progress. I wasn't on council when Hilltop was approved, so I didn't vote for it, but I will go on record as saying I would have voted for Hilltop had I been on council at the time. I also believe based on the seven to zero votes right off top, that the vast majority of the people in Dexter, including people such as myself at the time, also have developed. They used, they used to tell people there is always some people that disagreed with you to include was less than one percent of the people in the community. So every vote at least had a few dozen people thinking you were wrong. In the past, most of these types of issues were never brought up by those ten percent or less because they knew most of the communities in support. Cases where issues spoken and unspoken exist and get a more vocal response. Times have changed and now people feel they can say things and there is no consequence. But the people at Hilltop are overseeing the consequences of the comments being made and information being spread every day as they go about their lives. I had some additional feedback from Faith in Action Avalon. They said Hilltop is an opportunity for the city of Dexter to be part of alleviating the effects of generational poverty and systemic racism. Faith in Action with Avalon is responsible to issues that arise. Both Faith in Action and Avalon wish to have the best outcomes at Hilltop, not only for Hilltop campus, but also for the city. Resident evictions have recently happened and additional evictions will ensue if warranted. Any process we go through must fulfill legal channels will take time and all residents have a chance to respond to the process. Although F A Faith in Action has addressed and will continue addressing issues that arise, we are also focusing on the opportunity that exists to help families, especially the children who live there through education and support. We're taking steps to change generational poverty in the future. Um, so with respect to the potential nuisance ordinance that would penalize for instance as a bad and three or more calls for services within ninety days. There's a number of situations where this could further endanger our residents. What are we to do about the home where the members of the family are victims of domestic abuse? Are we intending that those people should continue suffering abuse and pick and choose the times to call for help? Or maybe decide they need to endure some injury or situation because they've called for help too many times? But what we say that would happen, it won't apply in these situations. Know that if an ordinance like this wasn't acted, we are required to treat every single address in the city of Dexter exactly the same for any of these issues. If we don't, reliable for back fair housing and civil rights laws and and this is a, this is not certively in any way, shape, or form. If you mean your best, literally this morning. This morning in the um running article. And it said, it was reported that the cities of San Bernardino, California and Riverside, California, quote, have repealed most of their crime free multi housing programs which were designed to improve tenant safety but have been criticized for destabilizing families, especially in low income communities of color. The article further reports tenants were required to sign an addendum to the lease that if there was illegal activity by either the tenant or the guest, that the tenants could be evicted. And that components where some of the controversy lies. There have been cases in other cities where people were evicted, even while alleged crimes took place elsewhere, although there was no arrest or conviction. Families have been uprooted when one member ran afoul of the law and domestic violence survivors have been evicted after calling police. And lastly, the removal of the program will ensure the city does not increase homelessness by putting an end to illegal evictions. And that strengthening the public safety and economic, a very economy of the city of Riverside. The city of Asperia recently withdrew its program after a federal lawsuit said it discriminated against black and Latino renters. That's the article that I passed out. To conclude, further info presented in the packet, a nuisance ordinance was stated as needed in Madison, Wisconsin, because, quote, this ordinance is a tool the city can use to firstly quickly and effectively evade nuisance activity that occurred on a specific premise. Second, the ordinance places responsibility for abating nuisance activity on the premise owners and hold the premises owner accountable for what happens on an association with his or her property. And third, the primary focus of this ordinance is non-owner occupied residential properties where the landlord has been unresponsive. The city's efforts to work with the landlord to evade the nuisance activities associated with his or her premises. So in the first place, the only way to quickly respond to issues is through law enforcement. There is no fast way to get through an eviction. And we can't afford landlord to do some, we can't purge them to do something illegal. They have to go through the process. Secondly, Avalon and Faith in Action have accepted responsibility and are already working to mitigate the issues by adding site or by adding staff coordinating with the Washington County Sheriff and have a willingness to coordinate with city staff as needed. Avalon and Faith in Action believe they are seeing improvement and progress. And lastly, for being responsive, Avalon and Faith in Action have been responsive to requests and are not required to to respond to requests individual council members. They are working to improve the situation, have communicated those efforts and have experience in addressing situations such as this. Until such times, conditions change and Avalon and Faith in Action are not taking steps to resolve issues, aren't taking responsibility or become unresponsive. Further discussion and consideration of nuisance ordinance are not warranted or productive, nor does it build on the values of this community and residents of Dexter. Oh, thanks for the length. Like I said, I had a lot that I wanted to put into that. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen.
Then you have, I'm going to have this. I'll put the back and still I'll work into it. It's a good report.
I think. It's an update.
And I'm giving comments.
I do. Um. I I agree with uh a lot of those comments and I want to say that I do appreciate both the work that has gone into the the packet from Miss Griffin and also Mr. Jimmy Pharaoh's comments. And and a lot of the comments, uh, Mr. Jimmer already, already mentioned that I see a danger in putting forward a proposal like this. I think it is done in the light of one specific thing. But we forget that if something like that is put in place, it can apply to many, many other situations. And as I was mentioned, we are then obligated to apply it to many, many situations. Some of them, people might agree that it's fair. Some people might not agree that's fair. But something like that in place is gonna be more dangerous and harmful to the entire citizens of Dexter than it is seems to be um in this case, wanting to show that not supporting it will bring harm. Where is the stop here if we start something like this? Who is next? Who is picking and choosing? In our December twenty twenty two meetings, it was brought up that the first district park had been a place for drug dealers and drug users for decades. Nothing like this have come up to make that part of the news then. Where is the stop from here? We have had things happening to our public art. Things happening around our city before Avalon was here. Where is the stop from here? Are we going to ask every single unit that is a rental unit in the city of Dexter to show their lease? Are we giving you a message that people should be afraid to call for help because they've become statistics that then what, we evict them from the city? One of the things I I was not on the council when Avalon was approved. I would have supported it if I was on the council. But that project actually was one of the reasons I wanted to go beyond Arts and Culture Committee and get involved more in the community and and on the council. That project the support of, you know, when Avalon and Faith in Action came together, all the churches in our city, all the organizations and businesses that supported it, all the people that I spoke with that individually supported it. That is the sense of care and community that was very important for me. Nobody said this would be perfect. Our city is not crime free hundred percent. But at least we are giving chance to people and we are saying we are a community that wants to be a caring community, a helping community. And that is not about not wanting to have care and support and safety of the community in mind is actually about wanting to do that, that we have this project here and a lot of people supported it. When they opened the project, I attended the opening and it was amazing to see all the people that came for the support. It was amazing when they gave their report here that seeing all the groups that are supporting this project because everybody understands that people go through tough times. And that doesn't mean people who live only in Avalon. Because a project like this shows that whoever is hurting in our community, we want to help them. So for me, those are the reasons I don't want to put an ordinance like that in.
Hold that. Thank you for your comments. I want to tell for one more. What?
That's very personal and it builds off of the um county member all that's um question of where does it stand, right? And look at this ordinance and private public nuisance, if there are three enforcement actions for nuisance activities occurring on residents, whatever, within ninety days. I grew up in privileged household with mentally ill father and unstable family structure. And there have been times in the history of that where we have made recalls to law enforcement within ninety days. So just because we think it doesn't exist in the other parts of the community. in the other parts of the community, it doesn't make that true. And you know, I mean, my dad is passed, so and but my mother is still living. She'd stand behind me and second what I just said. You can't. Uh, that I'm done.
Well.
And somebody, Georgia, could you read back to me what the agenda item modified to? No, what during the uh consideration of the same title?
Same title.
Yes. But I just wanna say publicly, I missed that change. I was not devoted for that. I was not looking for decisions to be made. Um, I was looking to have a conversation, um, which it seems like maybe we're having, I'm not sure. Um. Furthermore, it was not, even though the chronic nuisance ordinance was mentioned in this memo, it was if it isn't already clear, um, my method for approaching issues in the city is to gather lots of many reasons. This was run one week or uh that I came across that seemed relevant to this conversation. Um. If I wanted us to consider a chronic nuisance ordinance, I would have asked for a consideration item for a chronic nuisance ordinance. I guess, oh, I'm not uh looking for our other communities handling issues like this. Uh. I also want to take a bigger step back too to say it should be clear because it's happened on many, many occasions. How I approach my position on council, and this is not a judgment, I that's how anybody else approaches their position. How I approach my position is to advocate for residents. When they reach out to me, which they often do, whether it's hey, what's happening with the Dropbox? So I can drive off and put my utility bill into it. Yeah, I should do that. What's the state with the gazebo? It's looking a little worse for the wear. Can you get some more details on the maintenance of the gazebo? Hey, a lot of speeders coming out of Ann Arbor Street. What can you do about getting a speed radar done? You've all heard me. Advocate for residents on a variety of topics. That's how I approach my position. So late last fall, resident reached out expressing what I thought were very legitimate concerns about activities happening at this at that development. Very suddenly, the resident came to council on his only word of motor transportation, his bicycle, to say publicly how he has been victimized by people at that development. And then he had a ride home in the foreign rain. Again, my job is to advocate for residents. When they bring a concern or a question to me, I die deep. I die deep. And that's exactly what I'm doing here. I reached out to reps from Avalon and Faith in Action, like I said in my memo. You're right, they have no obligation to respond to me. But maybe had they responded to me, this whole bringing this conversation to this public setting, maybe it could have been avoided. I legitimately wanted to have an open conversation with them to say, look, part of our community. Everybody wins, the situation improves. What's happening to achieve that? When I don't get answers to that, I am going to take it to the next level to, I guess, sort of force the conversation, as unpleasant as that may be. And that doesn't mean I have nefarious motives. That means I am using the tools I have available to me to talk about issues that are important to residents, including those who live at Dunce. Our our job is to help everybody. I get that. I'm on board with that. Um. So please, don't misinterpret my intentions here. Uh. There, there is a lot to be learned by the data. Uh. Yes, there are names and families and lives behind those numbers, but there are names and families and lives behind the people who as long as are being trespass through. There are names and families and lives behind the people who live in the homes who the homes that are being scoped out, who feel like they can no longer leave their garage door open. There are names and families and lives behind the people who own our local businesses and the people who have had items stolen out of their vehicle. I mean, that's a real thing. And yeah, if residents had reached out to me and said, what's happening at First Street Park? We really need to get on top of that. I would have dived deep into that. No resident had reached out to me about that. No resident had reached out to me about the statue was being art, you know, being vandalized. Had the data showed some other pattern of calls? I would happily look into that. I mean, as you can see by the data, there's a lot happening at eighty one hundred Main Street. Okay, well, that's the side of the current station. So I reached out to our lieutenant and said, hey, what's going on there? Seems like we kind of have a hotspot. Oh, yeah, we get a lot of hotspot. Okay, so then you look at the distribution of those calls. I can say, okay, yeah, that's interesting to know. I mean, to me, data isn't a sentence. It's information to be considered along with all of the other contexts that you apparently unfortunately have been able to get from Dr. Manlon and Faith in Action, but I haven't. Appreciate that there on the call. I I mean, I don't know how to assure them that I legitimately was looking to have a conversation about what we all do to work together. Um. You know, and I reached out to, you know, after the resident came, I reached out to them and said, hey, I think it would be nice to have an internal meeting. I'd like to be at that meeting. Who did the invite to that meeting? Joe. You call for unity and healing. I get it. I get it. Um. I am not, I am not a bad person. I don't have nefarious intent when it comes to this topic. You can attribute to me all the bad character traits you want. I stand firm in the way I approach my position on council. There is useful information here. For example, just the time of the call. You know, they talked about having additional social workers on staff. Maybe you can see, oh, a quarter of the calls happen sort of during business hours, but thirty five percent are happening between eight PM and midnight. Maybe you could staff a social worker during during those times. I, you know, I can't imagine that Avalon and Faith in Action have understand this level of detail. I get they understand the person side of it, but maybe some of the logistics aren't clear to them and and maybe this can help inform what they do there. Um, so you know, masterful way to hijack a an agenda item. I'm gonna have to file it one way. I legitimately am here to help make positive change for the community, all residents, regardless of what type of housing they live, regardless of what color they are. I made no mention of race in any part of this. I don't care at all. Um, does not affect my decision making whatsoever. Please don't make it about that. I am not making it about that. Um. I wanted, you know, to say, oh, this is nothing new, you know, Isaiah Michael, whatever Hopkins. Um, that was new to accounts. Said he had key was a resident and he'll tell on that app, but I brought it up during council comment. Nobody else seemed to know that. Uh, I I am confirmed that I previously lived in Dexter. I'd be happy to do that. Um. We can't change what we don't acknowledge. Again, I would have rather had a one-on-one conversation with Dr. Manlon and Faith in Action. Again, they didn't respond to my email. That's their prerogative. It is also my prerogative as a council member to do what I can to effect meaningful and positive change in my community. We might be at odds when it comes to the method. I do want to emphasize that I think we have more shared goals than we realize. And I would appreciate it if every time something you didn't like came up, you would try to just postpone it, move it off the agenda. I mean, what's the point of having seven members on council if we can't bring our unique perspectives and share what we think is the worst to community? What's the point? What's the point of the all dog and unanimously? Why not just have one person? Why are we here? It would be a waste of my time if I didn't pursue with passion what I am passionate about. That's why I'm here. I will never apologize.
I don't think you should about that word. I think, um, I think the last meeting I said that I'd be happy to try and start a meeting with you. You aren't the only council member that's broken your gum, talking to him. You are a fish water boat. And you did it after the meeting and we're going Dr. Who else is the balcony or the back? You know, I'll still hold. I'd be happy to try and appear that you, but the you have the knowledge of facts, which is you have a built project.
You don't have date with me.
That is clear. That that is clear both ways. It's very clear. And and it's a telling reason why they probably haven't answered any of your emails. And that might be, I'm not trying to start anything there. I think your data, you can take a lot of time to compile some data. I made the suggestion that maybe along with soul kind of workers should be forty hours from two with the same kind of asset here, question, and they consider spreading them out so we can do some overlap, but cover more hours in a week. So I do think we have similar thoughts in certain ways. Okay, I think there's a lot of commonality on this data. But it's 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 when I saw this evidence, it's hard not to think that you were suggesting the ordinance. Well, maybe 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 you didn't. So, um. And I don't believe practice work, which is joyous. I don't believe it. I I do think, um. I do think it's it's okay to talk about this stuff. I don't have any problem with discussion. Don't have any problem with consideration. Okay, that 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 whole thing's been going on in Washington too. And just to, maybe I should have announced this early agenda, you know, our our rules stipulate that people can bring over an item prior to five o'clock on Monday for either discussion or consideration. It's been a general sentiment in mind that when you put something on the agenda for the first time, it's nice to have a discussion item because it it shows a little bit of transparency to the public. It gives you dignity and pressure. But it also takes in those council rules that follow Robert's rules, which stipulate that a motion can be made at any time. Okay, last meeting we made a motion, uh, because of a time sensitive issue relative to the clerk and and the the voting things. It's a harmless was a harmless motion that we needed to make that our city manager and our clerk could do their job. Was it on the agenda as consideration? No, I think everybody understands we follow Robert's rules. There's no intent to mislead. It was an essay thing. I like it when things could be discussed in person. Okay, but there are members of the council that don't feel that if there are a majority of people who don't really want to talk about this, but that it shouldn't get on the agenda. And we have a mixed bag right now. How we do that? You can bring something up ahead of time under both items. Which we rarely had somebody do on your N P. Okay, and if there's a sentiment to talk about it, it can be ordered at that time. Otherwise, you know, it goes on the next agenda. In in this case, I think what what the motion has been made and set up was reflected by Joe and sit down a lot and and support it is, we don't need it for resurgence at this time. Now, if there are other other discussion on the topic, we're on the topic. We've considered consideration, but there can't be discussion.
For me, the bottom line is that, I mean, if we're as I, okay, we start over. As I look at this, I don't have the agenda. I understand it's much broader than what we're talking about right now. Okay, as it brings. But for me, the bottom line is if the issue at hand really is the calls for service to Avalon, the fact that they are making, they are doing what they always do with any new development that they have put forward to remedy these issues in the first year. And so for me, like I said, like our first sweet bar, like Salam said, I mean, I want to give them the chance to address the issues themselves before we step in and say they're not doing what they need to be doing because I mean, crime to me implies longer than they've even been in existence in Dexter. So there is a period of transformation. There is a period of how we make this. They did it in Chelsea. They've done it in Ann Arbor. They've done it in Iceland. They will do it here. They are doing it here. And I just, I I'd like to just, that's it. Bye.
So I think there's like, I understand that this is related to, um, concerns from in part to Milwaukee pre-president. Um, I myself am a walkabout pre-president. I live there. And I understand that some of the changes, like people are concerned about changes or notices that they've been receiving that near here, but ultimately, as a person who's lived there, there has been crime before, and I'm sure as long as humanity exists, there will continue to be crime. I, the one, have never been felt unsafe in my neighborhood and this residence does not change that. And I think the real concern that I have more than this more than the concern of crime is the concern of overreacting and hurting our relationship with the city council's relationship with the community. To me, at this time, that as a person who lives in the community and serves our council is more important to me than the problems that have been those by.
Thank you, Ben. Paul?
Uh, I would then you're on first. Um, and so that means every day I'm driving past Phil Duff twice a day to and from school. Um, frequently that that coincides with when kids from there are walking and biking to school. Um, and one of the, one of the better parts, my morning, you see those kids like smiling together and passing stuff like that. Um, and then also as a student who is received every year of this formal education at Dexter, um, one of the consequences of that is appreciating the need for diversity in education and I'm proud to have those people in our community. Um, and I really appreciate the effort that council member, uh, San Ferro put into his statement. Um. And this being from twelve thirty five today, I thought was impressive. Um, and so, yeah, I'm I'm in agreement with those thought being echoed and I would be careful to label strong opposition to an idea as a commentary on the person who suggested it, if it was anyone.
All right, so I I will back it up again a little bit easier here. We just had a proclamation for the constitution. One of the basic tenants in an American government is ensuring domestic tranquility. Right? Uh, and then if you go back even broader, the Anglo-Saxon tradition since ten eighty, the purpose of government has been public health, safety, welfare. That's that's why governments existed. That's William Conker came that over and they established that. The United States is also a rule of law country. So while it's great that we have a mayor and mayor pro temp who've met with individuals there and have been able to work something out. If personalities change and stuff happens, there's there's nothing. It's based on kind of, you know, there's no predictability. What happens with this group may be different than it happened with another group. So rule of law is important to ensure equal protection and due process, which are fourteen, fifteen of those that that weren't over here, but are very important as well. I heard well, I guess I'll start with my credentials. I was on council and I did vote for it. In my research, housing first, especially this size tends to be the sweet spot. It breaks my heart that there have been these challenges and these hardships. And I imagine fewer people would support that type of thing today than before. And for me, that's a sign of failure. I heard someone mention in my apologies, I didn't get the name, that we ought to be helping people hurting in our community. The fellow who had his bike damaged, he's hurting. The folks who are worried about their cars being stolen are hurting. The people who don't feel comfortable in the backyard are hurting. The people who live there and may not feel safe are hurting as well. Um, I don't like the implication that because they're folks who are there for housing challenges or monetary damage or from trauma, that it's just part, that we're going to have to accept that this is something that happens. I grew up in a house that was one medical emergency or broken car weight from not making house payments. Right? I, I, there was reason why my parents got divorced. It wasn't because they didn't, couldn't agree what was on television. My step, my brother-in-law, no, stepbrother, sorry, owns five hundred houses in Indianapolis and around Chicago. Manages another three hundred. They're almost exclusively section six or section eight. I forget which section it's in. It's an even number section. He doesn't have problems like this. So these are people who get housing vouchers from the federal government, tell a. Um, yeah. I would like to point out that the reference, the comments here, Madison, Wisconsin, that's what they do. We don't have to copy and paste Madison, Wisconsin. We can change it and shape it however we want to. We can say it's over a sixty day period, over a thirty day period. This number of units here are the type of calls we're concerned with because it does affect public safety. I will say, having to do code enforcement, um, it's not uncommon that landlords or property owners like it when the government can be the bad guy. Like, sorry, you have to mow your lawn or you can't leave the car out. You have to do this type of things. This is a tool, even if this is trending well now. If this backslides or another community has problems, we have a tool in place where we can affect change. Um, it is important to do equal protection for everybody. Um, but generally in code enforcement, those who've done it know that your first, you first initiate the conversation. We have problems. We got to fix it. Come up with an action plan. You don't immediately go code red with all the sirens going around. That just doesn't make sense for anybody. It's, a lot of folks are skeptical of statistics. I will say, if you look on page two oh three, the call for service from the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, there are maybe fifty to seventy-five folks who live there, a hundred and six calls for service. The entire old village with about fifteen hundred people, give or take, at less. So there is, there is something going on. And it's important to have this conversation. I, what I generally try to do if I'm writing ordinance to address something in the community that's not quite going right, is we bring the folks in. And we, we engage them and we say, will this work? Will it not work? The slippery slope arguments, where does it end? We caught a bite. Here, here are the areas that apply to here the, here are the steps, here's the process. Disappointed that we learned that you didn't have any more conversation about how we can make it better and more predictable for everybody.
Well?
Thank you. Um, for something council member Michelle implied, and that is very wrong, of that our mayor and one of the council members are working with Avalon as if they're trying to hide things or making plans and things like that. Juan and I have met with Avalon in our, we are, however many months ago. There have been separate conversations as well, and that's the spirit of our lease work. And make sure that the comments are getting to, to them and the feedback is getting to them and we are receiving their feedback as well. To me, when that gentleman from Swakopar Creek came and had that conversation with us, exactly what needs to be done to support him has happened. A conversation with Avalon to say, we see these things, we are hearing about these things, what are you doing about it? If, if, I don't know what, in, in that sense, is, is what has been done. If that person coming and sharing that, and then the Avalon is not approached, Avalon was approached. They're asked what you're doing about it. They, it was mentioned that two new councilors are hired. Their project in Chelsea also has had in the beginning issue. Right now, they, there, there is only from my understanding, one counselor there half time per week because they no longer see those issues. Because they have gone past the point of having, that there are changes and they're all of a sudden, all of them there and there are changes and they need to go through the challenges. Like every other community that in, with that concept is coming about. And to me, the correct route of it is to say, these are the things we are seeing. Here is the feedback to you. What are you doing about it? Your thing we have seen added to councilors, we are evicting people through the eviction process. There is still eviction process. They can't just go and rap people and kill them up. So they are working on, on things. And to me, if this was just on the agenda about what are we doing about things that could potentially, how are we approaching issues and feedback and that sort of thing? It was a very different agenda. But I overheard comments walking out of the council meeting the night that that gentleman was here about Hilltop. I encourage every citizen and every person who needs a refresher on some of the comments that were made about Avalon and Hilltop in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty to go back and look at the non-erase participations. There has to be a level of trust in conversations that for those of us maybe who are able to make, to have that trust better in conversation both ways. I'm not just saying from one way. But that doesn't mean that that nothing is about, not is, nothing is done about it. People are in groups with Avalon or that if there are issues coming to us here, that they are ignored and those residents are ignored.
Well, Dan?
I asked Michelle for an earlier copy of her zoning ordinance and I may get that at some point. So I don't know what first ever zoning powers or zoning ordinance read as it relates to P U D at the time. This P U D was one of the groups. The currently Arizona ordinance reads, in relation to the underlying zoning, the proposed type and density of use shall not result in material increase in the new flood hazard services, facilities and utilities, and shall not place a material burden upon the subject or surrounding land or property owners and occupants for the natural environment. The public went to great lengths to accommodate this development. The parcel was rezoned. The public-owned property was sold for low market value. The development itself is tax exempt. As I mentioned earlier, the cost to construct, which is primarily funded through local housing tax credits and lien dollars, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars a unit. Those are taxpayer dollars. Taxpayers locally are paid for sidewalk connectivity along Dan Holley Road. We're paying for a mid-block crossing to accommodate this development. Taxpayers are fronting the cost of placing fire services. This development accounts for dispossessing a share of those services. If there's going to be a conversation, a public conversation about any development, it seems to me this is the type of development we have a public conversation about. The public is bearing a substantial burden on a variety of aspects. Um, you know, in terms of, in terms of bringing the law to bear on this. Avalon themselves, they have no problem taking their own residents to court for failure to pay rent. Since June twenty sixteen, they've been either the plaintiff or defendant in eight hundred fifty-nine cases. Roughly fifty cases a year, many of which are for non-paying the rent. I did not review all of that. So when they're not getting the money that they are due, they'll hurt the residents accountable. I'm here to advocate for city of Dexter resident and taxpayers who maybe feel like they're not getting a fair shake here. And I appreciate that some of you have had your own private conversations and that, that's all great and don't be worried. The point of council for council to make decisions, wouldn't it be better if we all had the same information at the same time? That's why I bring these memos to council because again, that is my perspective on council. If not for me and someone else on council to go and figure it out, maybe we have a couple of conversations and then you bring it to council. Bring it to council. Not even necessarily like this type of date. Let's have that conversation as a council. Um, again, please.
Are you picking on me by the way I just closed the meeting last time?
I'm just saying, I'm asking for more than that. I appreciate that. Can you pay the update? I think it's a council-wide conversation, which is why I brought it to be a council-wide conversation.
That's fine, but I did disclose everything that happened at the meeting. If you have a difficult question, I can help you with the answer to your question. Something that, that's a fair question they might ask. But we didn't, we didn't determine it. Then all we did is learn.
Right. And that's all I'm hoping to be here. Sharing.
You haven't given me a question.
Well, I'm asking for that to be a public question.
Every time I do that, I will tell you that. But I'm not the enemy either. Yes, you are implying that, that the conversation I had was in no way a good one. That's the way I'm taking it. You're, you're, you're.
I'm saying insufficient. I want more.
Well, I know you do. And I, I offered to try and help. And two weeks has gone by and this is what showed up.
I don't want backdoor conversations. I don't.
My, there's no, there's no backdoor conversation. It's completely out public. We met in a public place. I told you what we learned. But don't imply anything. That's what, that's why people don't trust what.
What I need to get is why are you staying here to have a conversation?
Say that again?
Why aren't they here to have a conversation?
What's the conversation that they didn't have? What, what?
The one they have with you. Why can't that be in this context, in this way?
I suppose they can. They had a representative of the board speak tonight. That doesn't count for anything?
Not a conversation.
Well, this is a really one we've not listened.
Conversations are back and forth.
Yes, they are.
Right.
And they engage. You're searching. You're not giving.
No, no.
Well, it does, that, maybe that's my perception. So I'm sorry if that's out of tune.
My emotions are not involved in my habits here.
I would like to, I would be happy to help you. I've offered a long, long paper.
Thank you.
Sergeant, please go on the mission.
Blah?
Yes.
Sammy Farrel?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Alda, yes. Hubbard, yes. Griffin, no. Hugh?
Yes. Motion carries by the student. We didn't say it on four as a suspension of other postal payment benefits planning policies. Okay, it's on the agenda. So I'll get over to you on that specifically.
Yeah, so, um, a while back, we talked about, um, doing updates, uh, major updates to our, um, OPEB, uh, actuarial study, uh, seeing kind of where we're at and talk with council about setting a policy on what level of funding we want to maintain at any given point. Um, whether we're, we're contributing or, um, pulling from our, um, actuarial, uh, determined resources for OPEB. Um, and for a, um, we're a trooper and working with, uh, Stevens to, um, get our urban year complete. And they just determined that we are a hundred and twenty percent funded, uh, than our OPEB, which is fantastic. Uh, I think it can be, it's still fine. Uh, many other communities that are in such a good position with their OPEB. Um, but so the, the question that we wanted to bring to council is as we move forward with funding, uh, retired healthcare, um, and contributing to and pulling from our OPEB funds, at what level does council feel for work, specifically a percentage is how we'll feel comfortable maintaining, um, moving forward? Um, I think, you know, kind of, we don't necessarily want to overfund. Um, but we also don't want you to be like, well, it's like more part of our trend. All that we're at, you know, seventy percent where it can put a banana tree.
And I think it can be accomplished without from the big year just by doing some stuff on that. In that off-year, we have our open valuation. We do the math. That next year, we have our evaluation and I don't think it's going to require that mid-year or at night. Or mid, you know what I mean?
Blah, did you hear that?
Uh, yeah, Marie started just answering that question. I guess I was just wondering. Did you reanswer?
Yeah, basically you just use what you got. You say, okay, this is the dollar figure that this is our dollar figure target. Where are we as percentage of that dollar per year? You know, it won't be a hundred percent accurate. It will be also.
And, and with, with market at any given point, you know, well, it'll, it'll forever be a state of flux until, until the last person pulling from OPEB with us, um, which is, is going to be, you know, always down the road.
I don't believe for most of the time.
Could we want to excuse Mr. Flack for this discussion that he's participated in my work? I'd be more happy to.
I, I know we did it last time. It just comes to my brain now.
Is this a discussion or a conservative?
It's a discussion.
Yeah, I guess.
It doesn't? Okay, no, I would love to excuse myself because it doesn't affect me at the end of the day.
I'll have to say that I I don't play with the fact that there was a heart swing. And I don't think any area could do where there ought to be a minimal, and that's, don't worry about it, we're going to play ball and play crap in twenty. Yeah.
Let me ask the historical question because I know you and I think you were, you're too, right before the last recession to never made it. And we went, I assume you went through this discussion before that, not knowing what was going to happen. And you sort of fill me in on what, what, what that discussion looked like and what, how we got to this point. I mean, I'm.
We, we had zero in two thousand and eight. You also that year, I might be off the year, but in two thousand and eight, we had zero in our You also did that year. I might be off the year, but in two thousand and eight, we had zero in our. OPEB. Um, savings account, you don't call that.
Yeah.
And we took a hundred and sixty thousand on the first year of recent population. At that time, that was ten percent of the gap. The gap was one point six million. What I remember.
Actual money that we got to give our new sharing.
Yeah, to, and put it there to make a good, to, to start off, and we've been saving it ever since. And there's, there's a table on it, and I'm finding out which page it is where it shows what we've done the last five years. What we've really. Done more than already been done. I don't know, the table in here, in the center of the last five years, though, I would say, but you know, I, I just. I just think you get in trouble when you go from one extreme to the other. And I know that, the way, I get that the policy is going to trigger you, if you're less than one twenty, then you do something. Right? I just think that if you're not going to, if, if, if we think you're. I don't want to be overly confident in any one year, because the market has swung big time in a year. So I would rather not do zero when you're most confident at one twenty, I guess, because that's an arbitrary percentage that people are comfortable at. Not that it's wrong or right, but I appreciate that you did some research. But I would rather not have it be zero.
Well. Marie, am I reading this right? In June of twenty twenty, we were at seventy percent and now we're at a hundred and twenty percent?
Yes, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, two oh nine.
Yes, so what, what happened? There was actually, there was a um, miscommunication. With the gentleman that does the um. The um, valuation. Whereas when we originally started doing with them, they even realized that we were um. Uh, like funding the current retirees out of the general fund. He thought we were funding them out of, already out of that OPEB fund. So I think it was the. I don't remember, somewhere the third valuation that we did, that he realized that we were. Not funding them out of that OPEB. And so that was a significant change in the percentage.
The. So what I remember historically was in two thousand and two when it came on council. I think we were, it wasn't on OPEB obviously because that was zero. But in the overall mirrors for retirement. We were at like a hundred percent funded. And we made or close to it.
Yeah, we, well, yeah.
At least eighty percent or something.
Yeah.
But we did a couple of things. We had a colon change that we approved once or twice.
Yeah.
And then we didn't do any longer.
Doesn't really define that a period of, right?
Yes.
And that, and that was, that's not this one.
I understand, okay, but I'm saying that as an example. The thing is, is whatever we do is after that point, we've always contributed the amount that Mer said that we were supposed to contribute. And long about two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, we were at forty percent or something. That we are an extremely low level and had to strike a triple. To get back.
Yeah, a couple of things that when I, when I remember plan to, um. For instance, we, we carved out the fire department, but when we carved out the fire department, some of their retirees did not move. Um, that, I believe they're all with the feet now. Um, so there was a thing that happens, you know, in that timeframe to. That made some differences.
I guess what I'm saying. This number might not be the same number a year from now or two years from now.
Well, I think, so what we're looking for really to be honest, is, is not, I mean. As we prepare the budgets each year, um. It would be helpful to have guidance from council of what your tolerance level is, and if your tolerance level is, put a certain amount in every year, that's fine to stack. It's just. What happened this year with the budget and we came, you know, we, we, we came and, and all of a sudden it was like, oh no, we don't like this, and then. We may need to do a budget amendment now, the general fund, because right now it's not funded in there, but it's funded in its groundwater. So we're trying to avoid that by giving the guidance upfront, so when we start developing next year, we know what causes that variations are. And the easiest way to do that is take a percentage of funding, but if council would refer to have. Whatever a dollar amount, that's fine too, you know what I'm saying?
Or combination, like, not necessarily one, but no less than twenty thousand would be needed.
So I'm reacting to a limited policy. Would you, by the way, you should save your app.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not actually policy, so you're.
Yeah.
I don't mean.
You have A, B, C, D in your policy.
Oh, okay.
A, B, C, D, although.
Right. So if we need to say something different, then.
Yeah, I mean, we can be, you know, uh, we'll maintain a hundred and twenty percent, but each given year no less than. Twenty thousand, yeah.
Something, something less than zero, so it offsets the, they just say. Because we may not be able to make it up for next year as easily.
Sorry, the, the whole, my time is fresh, but.
That, sorry.
This should be an easy number, but I've forgotten it because it's after nine o'clock. What's our policy for our, our budget, our reserves as a percentage of our? Fifteen percent? Well, that'd be kind of like the low bar for us, I get to.
Um.
I do understand that there are a lot of communities that are nowhere near. The same place that we are. It would be helpful if there's some opportunity to reach out to other communities. I know where some is, where we funded on something they did in large fund, they, they shot ahead. Um, so that'd be helpful, but see what other folks are doing. I would prefer to have a window, like if we're a hundred and fifty percent funded. Why are we putting twenty thousand dollars into this? We can do sidewalks, we can do something else that has immediate effect. Um, so I, I would personally like to see a window, if it's maybe folks are more comfortable for more than a third twenty-five percent. Then we don't anticipate putting money. It doesn't mean we can't, but when budgets are being prepared, it's kind of like we've got extra money. And if it's below a certain point, then we do whatever. I don't know what those lower limits would be, but. My two pennies.
Well, we'd have a conversation about it. At every budget, but I can't remember mostly. About what, what, the, the, the managers, Brock Wood, and that. If you want to continue during that, we do the ninety, that's enough. I mean, we don't need the policy to do that. The first, I'm just saying that if we're going to have a policy, I would love to do that. I, I don't need the policy first, but, but I don't know why you want to have it. But.
I thought there's, so now which overall size that we're breaking up, that we're saying that we're at twenty now?
Overall size on?
The OPEB.
There's thirteen people in it.
No, no, dollar amount.
Two.
Oh, two point one then.
Okay, so two point four, okay. So two million would be a hundred percent funded?
Yeah, two point one, yeah.
So a hundred thousand is five percent, twenty thousand is one percent.
Have we been contributing? Well, I was looking for that handle, that's what I was looking for, but it, it, it varies, the reason, the contributor. A hundred thousand, nine. Uh, or you think a few, two point five?
And I remember you were saying, I mean.
Two point five, I should have said, but. Don't they, actuarial will determine than our actual, or you've been in the. But we, we, we just, we just, we got to reach, we were in like two thousand and fourteen.
Yes, we did raise more.
Or we, you know, but we, we talked about the numbers every year, if we want to reduce it, we can do that. But the most important thing is that every two years you get a valuation, but you get a little bit.
Oh, yeah, and you can add a lot of fire.
Well, you could argue, if we took zero last year, we'd only be a hundred and ten percent funded. Or we might have found it in. That, the difference is, the five percent over is more invaluable.
Okay, but I don't, I'm, I'm not an actuarial scientist, but I would believe that it would be taking at any, any consideration. Well, yeah, which would be, yeah, you're, you're paying it, that you're one, right?
I mean, we, we would have not had our whole event or that. Yeah, it's possible, possible. We chose to do zero last year.
Right.
Because we were over a hundred percent of it, and then we decided to do that, you know what I mean? So I think putting something in every year is better than zero, by the way.
Right, okay.
If, if we feel comfortably above the, the food liability, the total liability.
His assumption of is that we're going to be zero.
Because we're above.
Yeah, in one year for two years.
If, I mean, it'd be based on the actual, like, what is the merit of these?
It's a subject that, but his assumption is that we're going to be zero after a hundred.
But depends on what is, but it depends if we fall below a hundred percent. I mean, I, this is, this is a vague science that I don't even want to understand. I mean, I'm very blunt about it, but. That's, I mean, that's my understanding of it, is that he uses all of his various. Voodoo that they do. That come up with what your contribution should be each year. Then we leave the next two years, well, based on that, one and a zero.
Where did the two hundred and eleven thousand come from?
Two hundred and eleven.
The last contribution, where did that number come from?
I just, I put the number that was in my.
That's what we've been in for across all times. General waters, silver street, wherever, and red plain.
I understand, I'm asking though, where that number came from? How, how, how did we get to two hundred and eleven, one hundred and eighty-six dollars?
It was, it's hard to forget that name.
Like a percentage of the funds or? Just a eerie over amount that was in the same amount that we used to make up the below a hundred percent?
Yeah, I think it's about the same amount roughly for a long time.
So, so, because, I mean, there's, so there's um. There's our contribution on there is.
Oh, yeah. The employee, yeah, thank you. The employee cost share for retired healthcare cost share. The part of it's all.
And so that, 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 that may, that may be a contributing factor to why there's. A row.
So, well, why they're not around with Mer.
Yeah.
Look, I'm, I'm not trying to defer, not, I'm only having a policy, you've been, that, I don't trust you, you gotta know what to do. If we need one. I'll support it. I just would rather not have the zero. Would be my, would be my comment for the first paper. I. But I, I've been part of this for building this thing. It was with you guys for the last fifteen years. I don't want to see it drop the other way and then have us go, oh, how do we, now all of a sudden we have to get back to another number? Because then we're going back and what, what's the discretion and all I want to put in, which is the same conversation we can have every year. I give you a year, you say, you know what, we're doing really good here, put a tourist headlock, we're doing something else, but it's not just that.
But I, I think, I think, I think what we would do is, you know, based on policy, could use that in the first cut of budget. And then if, if there's.
The other reason that I kind of wanted to help with policy, so I mentioned this before about possibly being, um. My concerns about all the gap twenty and the, and the investments that we're allowed to invest in, um, I call treasury. No answers, you know, nobody has a clue as to whether or not that law comes into this kind of investment account, um, probably nobody's ever asked it. So if we have a policy, at least if there's a question, you know, from an honor or from treasury.
Yeah, we'll say, well.
This is our policy. You know?
Well, um, I, I really like the comment that Congressman Shells had. Um, I think fifteen percent should be a floor. I think that's a good point. I would think something like double that would be a good ceiling. I mean, maybe it's like when you're between one fifteen and one thirty, you're still making contributions and you get a one and thirty at that point, say, okay. Good enough, but.
Give me an opportunity.
Okay, we'll do the background again.
I, I'm at a conference the next month, the next week I'm at a conference, I'll let you know if you want to cut out a, one way.
Okay, we're back around and on ready for this page. If anyone in the audience would like to continue, we can call Dan back in. He hopefully didn't.
That's probably why I left it, to like convince him to come back. Yeah?
I can't call, I can't call.
Phone's here.
Phone's here. All right, so is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
I do have a handout.
Okay, thank you, hand online, please. Ryan?
Yeah, Mr. Ryan, okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, hi counsel, I'm Ryan Hanyar, three five seven seven Shaw Court. I haven't moved in the past three hours. Thank you all for um. The compassion and care shown in the discussion tonight. Um, I am speaking right now just as a Dexter resident, like I said, somebody's lived here ten years, not in my capacity to avalon. And also as someone who is a diversity, equity, inclusion consultant, expert, have done this work. Professionally for, you know, for years and years, both um, in my, my day jobs and as well as like. In consulting work with organizations all across the, all across the state. I do think that it is important to remember the difference between intent versus impact. And we can have intent to have certain things come about from the discussions or things that we put into. Council packets. This is not the first time that I've come before council with concerns about. The ways in which we talk about certain residents, certain residencies, certain developments, certain opportunities. And know that these things are going to be permanently in the record. They have an impact on how we are perceived as a community. They have an impact on who is willing to move here. Um, when M live article comes out, you know, about, you know, something that goes on in council and, and, and someone, someone will reach out to me. Because I am one of the few people of color that they know in Dexter and say, hey, Ryan, what the hell is going on? Hey, Ryan, I, you've said such wonderful things about this town. You've invited us to come, uh, to come sit with you at the cider mill or to go down to Dexter days. Is it really welcoming for me? And we can have the intent to just ask questions or to start a discussion. But the way we go about those things, especially you as elected officials who represent all citizens of the city of Dexter. Has impact. Impact far beyond what a transitory intent may, may imply. And I ask you all to act with the responsibility that that holds. And to understand that there is more than just the people who. Come to you with, uh, come to you with questions or concerns that you're talking to. You're also speaking to members of the community who cannot take two and a half hours out of their Monday evening to be here live with you. Uh, you're, you're speaking to residents in the future who will look back and ask. What, what did it mean when we were first invited into this community? When do we feel like Dexter was home? For me, I've lived here for ten years. I've never been pulled over by the sheriffs or the police in ten years. People, people know I'm notoriously a slow driver, if anything, because I'm looking for birds to take photos of. Um, and the only time I've ever been pulled over in Dexter was this past summer. Driving past Hilltop View, trying to turn into donate some coat, some A ninety-five mask to the food pantry. Um, I was pulled over because I got into the left lane too early. Um, and I know that the fear that I have around interactions with. Police is one shared by many different residents, both residents of color, folks who have disabilities. People who have seen what's going on in terms of uh, police violence and things, and even know, knowing that, you know, people may have really great um. Relationships, it still doesn't stop the overwhelming sense of racial trauma that exists for people in this country around policing. We are not immune to the environment of the country that we live in. And as someone who is an expert in um, in policing, in uh, in policing, in ju, in. In policing, in, uh, in, in policing ju- injustice work, um, and have run courses on this at the University of Michigan and other places. Those things don't change just because Dexter is nice. And so all these police interactions we're talking about are traumatizing. Um, they can call back into times when they haven't been treated fairly. Um, it is impossible to, you know, to hear concerns about, you know, people worrying about cars being broken into. The year that I moved into Dexter. There was a, a spate of, of, of car thefts, um, people having their cars broken into. There were lots of comments and everything on Nextdoor and on Facebook, um, talking about who was coming in town and, and causing this problem. And frankly, it has shown up every single summer for the past ten years. Um, when I dig into those comments and see lots of derogatory things about who is assumed the outsiders, the others who are doing these things. Um, you dig into the details and you find out that, oh, someone did not close their, they, they didn't lock their car. Someone stole my car keys, where were they? They were in my car unlocked in the center council. Um, and was your car there? Yes. And it's like, well, there's, there's a very big difference between the expectations that people have around safety and how that transmits to people. Someone may just be complaining because they have a terrible experience and they're right to do so. And they're able to like ask and try to protect the safety of their, of their property, the safety of their persons, um, I think that that's perfectly reasonable thing to do. Um, what I don't think is reasonable is to geo-target and to look at particular areas and say, this is now the bad side of town. Or this is the area in which we're going to focus, um, codifying those things in a law. Um, are, are mistakes that we've seen made in, across lots of different areas. We have so many different things happening in the country around issues with single family zoning that are codified in law to seem neutral. And have a disparate impact on marginalized communities. There's plenty of things that, you know, that may seem like they are on their face fair. When you look into how they are actually perceived, how they're actually experienced by people. They are not received with the same level of impact. And I think that we can all come to each other with a sense of good faith in our, in our discussions. And something that I, that I truly, truly appreciate about Dexter is that people have been willing to. Speak with me about these things in good faith and have conversations, and I've had plenty of these conversations with, uh, members of the community. And we've talked about these things and agreed to disagree or change minds or, or adjusted our thinking. It's okay to admit that, you know, we don't know everything. And that we don't, and that how, what the things we need to do for our community are based on what we decide as people. I just want everyone to remember that though your intent may be to represent. You know, certain opinions and things that you think about, what, think about what you're going to reproduce in the official record. As a government body and how that represents all of us, including myself. And how the things that are, you know, untoward and that like made me sick to my stomach to read. You know, in, in not just this, this particular case, but this happened multiple times before. Um, of things said about, you know, the people, the people who have come to live in Hilltop View. Before Hilltop View was a twinkle in, uh, in was I, um, hearing those comments and things made me feel less welcome. And I know that that doesn't go away. I want everyone to understand that the impact that they have as a member of the community and as individuals, all of us have a lot of impact. Um, your student representatives here showed a fantastic example of being able to share their experiences in a respectful way. And in to demonstrate that there's an impact that they're hearing in terms of. How this discussion goes and, and how it relates to their experiences and how they understand their communities. Lots of folks are listening. I implore you all to just continue to, to keep into consideration who all is included when you think about the Dexter community. And, and how we center some, uh, we center some of those needs and desires and wants and decisions about direction. Um, more than others and recognize that there's lots of folks who want Dexter to be home too. Um, thank you all for your time and consideration, I know it's been a late night. Um, and, uh, thank you all for continuing to serve, I think that it's a difficult thing to do, uh, to prepare to come, come in to serve. Um, I continue to look forward to what you're able to accomplish as a body. And I thank you all for being open and being able to have these conversations. Conversations with people and to be responsive, uh, to when there's feedback or pushback. Um, I think all of those are signs of a mature, um, mature position towards governance and civics. And as this is Constitution Week, uh, recognizing that all of us, in addition to, you know, general prosperity have, you know, the. You know, the general promise of, you know, like of the pursuit of happiness and that involves, it includes housing. So thank you all very much, have a good night.
Thank you for your time, Ryan, thanks for telling me. Anyone else online, Josh, they can see, I don't see any here, so, but. I don't see any further here, so. Okay, we've concluded our non-ranked participation, we're on to council committees. Zach, can you lead off today?
Oh, yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Hennert for speaking, I'm not sure what your takeaway is, but, uh, I think we probably agree on ninety-nine percent of everything that's been discussed. Um, I found that. When. The biggest challenge on the impact for words is when folks. Don't do a good job of understanding the intent of the folks sharing it. And that's just the, the nature of, of human cognitive functioning, that it's, it's difficult to see things from other perspectives. Didn't get to have this comment, uh, during, the question was called a bit quickly, but. As a planner, one of the things you'll wake up in a cold sweat at night and just spout off is due process and equal protection. The, the idea that there's predictability and if you get the same stuff in, you're gonna get the same stuff out of time after time after time. That's, that's important to rule by law. Whether, which is very different from rule on personality, which tends to be more ad hoc. So it's great that private meeting, which has been shared, is having impact. But. If there are new people doing those, it may be a different impact, it may have different results. And I will always go on the side of due process and equal protection. Um, there are some ways that, and for folks who have rental units. Um, I, this is, I don't think a, a too clever hack, but if you do want to get rid of a tenant. Um, you don't have to go through the whole process. You can say, here's five hundred bucks, leave it out, or we're going for closure. Um, again, my step brother who has the five hundred plus units and managed another three hundred, so that's a gold ticket. Um, and they've done the math on where they say going to be returning through court. So there are, are tools available. Um, lastly, I would hope that in the coming year that this body look at some training, not just for ourselves, but our. Planning Commission, DDA, um, so important appeals and all our bodies for Robert Schulz order and the Open Meetings Act. Um, if those are followed, it keeps us out of trouble and it provides more efficient meetings, there are a lot of resources that Michigan News Willing. That are very helpful with that and that we did. Year after year for over six years in Dexter County. That's it.
Thank you, Zach, Jamie?
Schoolhouse Rock is a pretty catchy tune to learn of the elements of the Constitution, so I wanted to share that. Uh, wanted to share, I wanted to know on the milk be flat, I. Is not comfortable approving that without seeing what the final resolution would be for the Bopper Beach Cemetery that was. A strong point, a strong point of conversation during the planning commission's consideration of that item. Many residents felt very strongly about that, I think it's important to have that. Detail fully fleshed out before approving that, um. I also want to say that, uh, I appreciate Mr. Hennert's comment. True charity wills the good of the other, and that sometimes involves paternal correction. And paternal correction is not something we should shy away from because we fear it can call judgmental. Or we don't want to be made to feel uncomfortable. That actually is an act of self-preservation, not an act of charity. And I'm. I can't say more than happy, but I appreciate parental correction when it comes in, when it, when the intent is truly to will the good of the other and. I hope that people will come to realize that it is with that lens that I do a very good position on council, it is to. Improve the community for everybody. One thing I don't like about public comment is that we get some of these addresses, but we don't necessarily get any other means of. Reaching out to them and I am not inclined to. Physically confront or otherwise go to somebody's home, knock on their door and say, hey, you went to council meeting last night, let's chat. I, I don't feel comfortable doing that, I'm not sure that that would be welcome, so. Mr. Hennert, my email address is jgriffin@dextermi.gov, you have spoken on a couple of occasions, I think. Generally, um, making implied comments that I think are intended for me, I would be more than happy to have an actual conversation with you. Please email me to make arrangements, thank you.
Well.
As a community and a city, we are stronger together, especially when we have each other's backs.
Yeah, okay. You're just a great topic, I'm gonna, yeah, it was really good.
We're gonna buy you a motorcycle.
I'm here to talk in the conversation.
Well.
Yeah, I just got it off today.
Okay. Joe?
Uh, so, I'm sure you've heard it said about Schoolhouse Rock, that is, it came through my head. It was right outside, this evening.
It's not the conclusion yet, I don't know, maybe.
Well, probably you're.
My favorite Schoolhouse Rock comment is that I used to go on. And I guess my only other comment is just about, I think I have some concerns sometimes with the way that council. Talks about, um, concerns from residents. Um, I do agree when a person emails council that resident, that concern should be addressed. But I do think that sometimes we take those concerns and apply them to many residents within a community rather than just one. Um, and I think that comes from a deep place of wanting to solve that problem. But it is a concern for me when we use language. That implies that an individual who has come forward has a situation that applies to all members of the community. I know personally, when we talk about comments, like people being afraid to leave their garage doors open and walk up creek. My garage door is open right now, because I couldn't be bothered to close it on the way here, I don't have those concerns. So speaking in a way that implies that all members of my community have those concerns, um, can create a false sense of, um. Urgency that I think, um, can lead to having conversations that are not necessarily actually accurately evaluating who is at risk.
Well, um. I was just gonna echo what Sam said, um, and kind of. Rerequiem for entering conversations and, and, and debate on all sides always. But I think it's important now just to recognize the things that we want to talk about, also the kind of consequences that are resulting out, like I mentioned before. I think that's almost one of the foremost of the duties, and so what I wanted to do is really commend some members of council today for taking time to recognize. You know, just what kind of an impact having some kinds of conversations could have, how controversial, potentially polemic it could be. And, you know, some real life consequences based in sort of, like, you know, things that have happened in the past that really do consider. Um, what could be, uh, real consequence of, you know, what. We don't even fully know is a dramatic issue in our community. So. I do want to appreciate, um, the continued effort to make sure we're recognizing the consequences of the conversations that we have.
Thank you, everyone. Good showings. Um, does anybody have a post agenda item for a future meeting, so that's over. We're not, we're, 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 and, uh.